Okay, off that.
Thanks. Welcome to the October 27, 2025, meeting of the University of Rhode Island Board of Trustees Academic Affairs and Research Committee. The meeting is being held in person with committee members participating remotely. At this time, I'll conduct a roll call attendance to determine if a quorum is present. Please clearly respond, present via WebEx or present in person when your name is called. Neil Kerwin, present via WebEx, Charles Fogarty.
Present via WebEx.
Maria Ducharme. Monica Garz.
Present via WebEx.
Thanks, Ma. David Margarano.
Present via WebEx.
Thank you, David. Joseph Matthews.
Present via WebEx.
Thank you, Joe. Christine Bovee.
Present via WebEx.
Thank you, Christine. Mark Pallange.
Present via WebEx.
Thanks, Mark. Also in attendance, we have our board chair and vice chair, Margot Cook and Arbon Sabatoni. For the benefit of all, the interim secretary and the board secretary Emily DiManiis will recognize members of the senior leadership team who are participating remotely. She'll also identify those present in the meeting room.
Thanks, Neil. On the call, I see Barb Wolf, Alyssa Boss, Kristen Johnson, Stephanie Jenkins, Dean Labuti, Marquesha Minor, Matt McDonald, Chelsea Berry, Lauren Jensen, Mark Antonucci. We also have Lori McCarty, and I think that's everyone. And no one else is present in the room.
Okay, thank you. And a quorum is present, so I'll call a meeting order. A reminder to all members, for the benefit of our audience and the note taker, please clearly identify yourself whenever you comment, make a motion, or second a motion. Participants using WebEx are required to keep their cameras on as remote members, and all persons present in the meeting location must clearly be audible and visible to each other. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge that the University of Rhode Island occupies the traditional stomping ground of the Narragansett Nation and the Niantic People. First, I'll ask, are there any proposed amendments to the published agenda? Okay, hearing none. The first order of business is approval of the minutes. May I have a motion that the committee approve the minutes of the September 15, 2025, meeting?
Charlie Fogarty, so moved.
Thank you.
David.
Did you second? Thanks, David. Is there a discussion in the motion? I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, all opposed, say no. Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item two, the report of our chief academic officer, Barbara Wolf, Provost and Executive Vice President, Academic Affairs will now present. Barb, all yours.
Great, thank you, Chair Kerwin. Good afternoon, and we do have a presentation for you. Thank you, Emily. And what I'll do today is I'll be providing a brief summary of my update to the AAR Committee, and it is, go to the next slide. Here is a brief overview of the topics that I'll cover today. We move forward to the next slide. And we're going to touch base on the academic and leadership team for federal action updates, the medical school feasibility accreditation, and fall enrollment, which is normal for this time of year. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do is first give you a bit of an update on our academic enterprise here. And in case you haven't heard, URI was ranked the number one public university in New England by the Wall Street Journal for the second year in a row, so we are very excited about that. URI was also ranked the ninth public flagship university in the country, rising from 12 last year. So we see continuous improvement there. And then the Wall Street Journal's rankings, as you may know, are based on how well colleges and universities prepare students for careers as well as financial success. And our ranking is a reflection of our commitment to delivering an exceptional education that is accessible while also ensuring that students are receiving guidance and resources essential for their success. So we are just delighted to have this accomplishment for the second year in a row. Next slide, please. We also have some updates, speaking of student success, related to the Fannin Institute for Student Success. And this month, we announced the transformation of University College for Academic Success into the Kent and Diane Fannin Institute for Student Success. And here, this was made possible by the extraordinary generosity of Diane and Kent Fannin. So we're really, really grateful for their commitment to the university. But they are proud alumni and dear friends of the university. And the launch of the Fannin Institute allows us to highlight and organize the many ways we support our students and foster their academic and professional success, which is so important for our students and our community. If we can go to the next slide, please. I'll tell you a little bit about our student success here. So the Fannin Institute brings together five key areas that spell out the word cares. First is the Center for Career and Experiential Education, and they work with our students on internships, community engagement, and other personal and professional experience. The A is for the Academic Enhancement Center, and there they provide tutoring, writing support, and academic coaching. The R is for Retention and Academic Success Center. And here, they offer individualized academic interventions to help students with a sense of belonging, also to overcome challenges and to stay on track. So we're excited about that. And then we have E, which is the Exploratory Studies Center. And this supports the hundreds of students who join URI each year without a declared major and the thousands of students who do change majors, which is not uncommon. The S is for the Student Athlete Support Service, and they work with our student athletes to help them achieve academic excellence. And I will say that our athletes here are very good in terms of their academic success, and we're really, really thrilled of their continued academic achievement. So at URI, every student's journey and success really does matter on the generosity of a number of people. But we are particularly grateful to the Fannins for their vision, their generosity, and to our faculty and our staff and our students who really, truly bring the mission of the Fannin Institute for Student Success to life every single day. We can go to the next slide.
Hey, Barb, I had a question.
Sure.
So first of all, completely agree that Kent and Diane really stepped up into supporting this and bringing all of these pieces together in one. It's really fantastic to see. On the topic, and not to be answered today, but generally on the topic of of career placement and tapping into alumni and using LinkedIn-type tools or tools, like the technology-driven tools, to pair or to allow graduating students or graduates of URI to connect better with alumni. We're, and I don't know if other schools do this better. I'm guessing they do. We're still not where we need to be because it still feels like very anecdotal, like I get a call from this person or a call from that person, and I don't even know where to send them. So I'm hoping that in this movement, we are focused on that C. I think it's in the C, and that that becomes a much better and useful leveraging of our alumni.
Oh, absolutely. Great question, and really an area that we can move ahead and develop again with the generosity of of the Fannins. We really can now begin to build moving forward, and we have such a we could be better tapped resource in our alumni to help our students, both in terms of experiential learning, but placement, but jobs, career advice. And I think it's clearly a lot of opportunity there. This next slide is also to let you know that we are celebrating faculty in the top 2% of cited authors in 2024. This was recently released. Stanford University and Elsevier released an annual list of the top 2% of the most influential researchers in the world based on citation metrics, how often their publications are cited by largely other researchers or other people who are trying to use their knowledge to impact the world. And so we are excited to celebrate many of our faculty, many of them listed here. This is not a comprehensive list, but I wanted you to see that we really are making an impact with the research that these folks are doing. And their scholarship reflects that impact of URI and the exceptional opportunities our students have to learn alongside these exceptional individuals who are really, truly the best in their fields. So we're very excited to see this list. Too big to put it all on one slide, but again, representative of quite an array of colleges, not just one particular college. So we're excited. Neil?
Yeah, Barb and Neil, listen, I just want to very quickly commend the URI faculty. For the faculty this size, is not only the number, since they're not all listed here impressive in a per capita sense, but the fact that it's spread so broadly across the academic units is really good to see.
Yeah, it's very exciting, very exciting. If we can go to the next slide, please. Just a quick update on our leadership team for federal actions. They continue to meet weekly. We continue to have executive orders that come about or federal actions that come about that we need to look at and think about how they impact our community. We're currently actively tracking developments related to the government shutdown, as you can imagine, and how they may impact the university. We sent our community a message earlier this month to re-up the many resources that are available to the individuals here within our community, including our Office of Global Initiatives and the many centers and organizations on campus to support, affirm, and represent the various needs that our community and our Division of Research and Economic Development have. So we've been, they've also been communicating with the PIs regarding the government shutdown because clearly that can impact their work as well. Our Office of Global Initiatives and Human Resources are working diligently to understand the impact on URI of the changing requirements related to the H1B visas, including the $100,000 fee that's being imposed on new H1B applicants who are currently outside of the country. And the universities across the United States are grappling with this, including URI, you know, in terms of how do we handle this moving forward? Because we've used the H1B visas to bring exceptional faculty and staff to our campuses. So there are still some outstanding questions about how these changes relative to these visas will impact higher education, but we are monitoring it. And what is certain is that the new fee will not apply to extensions, amendments, or transfers, for example, if somebody is already on an H1B visa or they're already in country on another type of visa. So we're, again, watching that closely because that does have an impact on us. Our team is in regular contact with our international community as well, and we, again, are working with them to make sure that they have the latest information because they're the first to be impacted. Also, the leadership team is tracking responses to the Trump administration's proposed compact for academic excellence in higher education, and you may have seen this in the news. And this would require institutions that sign onto it to make commitments related to admissions, hiring, practices, enrollment, and more. So some examples that you might be aware of are, for example, freezing tuition for five years, banning the use of sex and gender as factors in admissions and hiring, capping the enrollment of international students at 15%, ensuring a vibrant, quote, "vibrant marketplace of ideas on campus," unquote, and anonymously polling students and employees on compact compliance and also publishing those results. So the administration claims that institutions who sign the compact will receive multiple positive benefits, including the benefits pertaining to research grants. There is a dialogue that is going on in the community in terms of how grant funding is determined because in our current situation, it's meritorious and through peer review process. So it raises a number of questions. Nine institutions were originally invited to sign the compact related to to the compact and signing onto it. Seven have already publicly declined, citing concerns related to academic freedom and their ability to fulfill their missions. So the seven that have already publicly declined are Brown, University of Arizona, Dartmouth, University of Virginia, MIT, Penn, and the University of Southern California. Vanderbilt has raised concerns without taking a position on signing at this point in time. And the University of Texas is the only institution that has publicly expressed an openness to sign, but it hasn't done so yet. So as of mid-October, the Trump administration invited all colleges and universities to sign the compact. And to date, to my knowledge, no institution has done so. So just to give you an update on that. But go to the next slide, please. Just a quick update on medical school feasibility study. This month, the consulting firm Trip Umbo completed its independent feasibility study into a possible College of Medicine at the University of Rhode Island. And the feasibility study recommends establishing a public MD-granting medical education program here at URI and outlines a proposed four-year and five-phase plan that would culminate in the launch of the program's charter class in fall of 2029. And in addition, the report found that a public MD program represented a clear and strategic pathway for the University of Rhode Island to address the state's pressing healthcare needs and economic challenges and is an essential investment in the future health, economic vitality, and resilience of Rhode Island and its communities. And those are the words of the consultant. At URI, or a URI College of Medicine, would be financially viable and would generate a return on state investment, returning nearly $30 in economic activity, tax revenue, and healthcare cost savings for every $1 taxpayer's investment. So the Special Legislative Commission, charged with looking into a possible College of Medicine here at URI, held a public hearing October 9th to receive public testimony. And more than a dozen of state-elected officials, medical professionals, and interested residents offered public testimony. And there was near-universal support for a public medical school, with many speakers noting URI's existing strengths in nursing, pharmacy, and health sciences and their contributions to the state healthcare. So among the elected officials who spoke in support of the medical school at URI were Lieutenant Governor Sabida Matos, Secretary of State Greg Demore, and General Treasurer James Diosa. And so the commission will meet again this week, actually Thursday night, and its final report is due to the legislature by January 2nd, 2026. So this January. So it's moving forward, certainly a final report to be issued and further considerations. So if we move on to our next slide, just a quick update about URI accreditation. Just as a reminder, we are up for reaccreditation by the New England Commission for Higher Education, also known as NECI, and that happens in 2027. And we are actively preparing for a self-study that will be undertaken this next year. And this process will start with a survey to the URI community and listening sessions that are specific to each of the NECI standards. And they are in the midst of being updated and will be finalized this December. So we're on this, waiting for them to be finalized so we know exactly what we're responding to. A preliminary draft of our self-study will be completed in March of 2027, and the final report to NECI will be submitted in August 2027. And I'd like to thank Chair Kerwin, who is also serving on that steering committee. So thank you. We go to the next slide. Briefly talk.
Barb, sorry, just before Dean starts, because the enrollment report always generates a lot of comment. Any questions or comments from the committee on the first three items that Barb covered? Well, four, including the recognitions.
Okay.
All right, once again, well, once again, great work on the rankings. I mean, that, we can't, the number one on Wall Street Journal is exceptional, but moving up three spots on the other is also notable. Okay, go ahead.
Going to turn it over to Dean. As of October 15, that represents our census date, when we finalize our enrollment and our retention numbers for the year. And after last year's dip in enrollment, due largely to the challenges with FAFSA, as you can recall, there was a bit of a debacle with the FAFSA rollout. We are very excited by this year's strong first-year class. So I'm going to turn it over to Dean Labuti, who you all know, our Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Success. And he's going to dive into the numbers, but before he does, I just want to thank him and his team for their relentless work in recruitment on admissions. And they've all been very, very busy, both with the launch of the Fannin Institute, but also we've had family weekends and different activities that have been going on across the university in terms of recruitment this fall. So Dean, I will be happy to let you inform everybody about what's going on.
Great. Thank you, Provost Wolf, and good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to always provide an update and how we did this fall for enrollment. I'm going to start with our first-year class and then begin to peel the layers back. Next slide, please. So our first is update on our incoming first-year students. And so applications, record all-time high of 20,003,6. That was 1,000 more than the year before. Really pleased to see URI begin to expand our message in many ways while there is a decline in high school demographics. So very proud of that. We were initially planning on bringing in 3275 first-year students, but as we know, last year, we had some challenges with the FAFSA, and we also had a strong application pool. So that target actually changed to 3385. Our official enrollment number is 3431. So you can see that the 3431 is above not only the 3275, but also the adjusted target. Very exciting about that. Our in-state breakdown, out-of-state breakdown, and regional breakdown is on the screen. I talk a lot about summer melt, and what I'm really proud about is while many schools had to go to their waitlist to try to hit their enrollment this year, that our gross target of 3735 gross deposits melted in just under 8%. And so we had a good year with 3431 first-year students, and again, over target as we needed it to be. Some attributes about this class, we have 315 in-state talent development scholars. I really want to congratulate the talent development team and Student Affairs and our faculty colleagues for bringing in such a great group. They had a terrific, successful summer program. This is a bright class. The average of recalculated grade point averages are 3.69. If you remember years ago, when I started this presentation, we were talking about it being around 3.1. And so it's nice to see a bright group. Over one in two students is bringing in college credit earned from high school. That was something we did the analysis, whether this is AP credit, IB credit, students taking dual and concurrent enrollment. So it's nice to see us bringing in a talented group that has started to do some college-level work. 27% of our students are diverse and non-white. They represent 42 states, 36 international students. One in four of our incoming students received a Pell Grant, which means they are deemed by the federal government through the FAFSA as some of the most financially needy. 30% first gen and 62% identify as female. So you can see lots of robust numbers that really make up our incoming class. I always remind this group that we really value our relationship with the community college and other college partners. We brought in 581 transfer students, the majority from in-state, but those come from 150 different schools. And so really, the work of our colleges in helping to bring students from so many other institutions and evaluating that credit is nice to see a strong transfer number as well. Next slide, please.
Hey, hey, Professor, I mean, hey, Dean.
Yeah, sure.
Quick question. I noticed if I look at this, go back one slide. We brought in 1255 in-state out of the 3385. It's about 37%. I mean, is that, and typically, it's always been 60/40, or I know it's been declining. Is that we're just not seeing the quality of the students in this state? Or is it, is it, what's the, this is always something that the Capitol Hill is always focused on. You know, unfortunately, I just was curious behind that number.
We have terrific in-state students, and we admit, we admit every in-state student that we feel is able to do college-level work, and that's actually over 75%, to be honest with you. The reality is that we know that that number should be closer to 1,500 a year with demographics, but due to the current tuition programs that are at CCRI Rhode Island College, students have been moved away from URI towards those other institutions. And so that is not based on the quality. We have great relationships with our schools. We have terrific programs. It is actually the, unfortunately, the current climate that we're in. You'll notice that the majority of our transfer students are in-state, and so we do everything we can to really provide that value. But we lost over 420 students that we admitted that went to CCRI Rhode Island College. And so that is the relationship with that, not on the quality.
That's a drip. Got it. That makes sense. Got it. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So when I talk about record application, I wanted to show you how that happened. And so I'm really proud of our university, our colleges, our faculty, the admission team, common marketing and others. But look at the growth that you're seeing in states that normally were not in our wheelhouse, right? Maryland, Virginia, DC, Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee, Illinois, Ohio, California, Texas, and Colorado. Really nice to see strong growth. We're really doing a lot out there, whether it be utilizing marketing, AI technology, doing things, plus getting that Wall Street Journal and R1 message out there. So I wanted to show you the tremendous growth in other states. As I mentioned, we have a very bright incoming class, and we're seeing our largest growth is actually in high-achieving students. So it's nice to see top students seeing us on the move. We continue to expand our outreach nationally. I received applications from 48 states. So if any of you know the Dakotas intimately, I'd love to turn you into a recruiter because those are our last two. So I think we can do it next year. And then most colleges had a great year. We did not just hit our enrollment by one college. Nursing and business led the way, but certainly engineering, even pharmacy and others had a great year. Next slide, please. So I really want to thank, so, you know, several years ago, Tom and Kathy Ryan and Alan, Jerry Varekia stepped forward to help us really provide some fantastic full-ride scholarships to really help us in the recruiting market. And these students are fantastic. I think you've heard that you have students that are Fulbright scholars and getting into medical school and earning terrific jobs and just doing tremendous things. Well, this year, we added in our latest scholarship to the family, thanks to the generous donation of the Schilling family. And I'm pleased to show you in front of you 37 incoming top scholars. Ryan, Varekia, and Schilling, representing 16 states, over 30 majors at URI, and in seven academic colleges. And so these are students that could have gone anywhere, turning down Ivy and other offers, and they're here doing their best work. And I'm really excited just to show you kind of the impact of certainly Tom and Kathy, Alan, Jerry, and then certainly the Schilling family on helping us be successful. Next slide, please. Wanted to go into more details about the overall university 5A. And as a reminder, October 15th is the National Census Day. As I talk through some of these data, there's a lot more available on our institutional research website. And I want to thank in advance John and our great team in IR for creating just substantial data that we have. Next slide, please. So URI, 17,471 students this year. That's all in undergrad, grad, online, high school. Over 15,000 undergrads, that includes pharmacy, 24, 26 graduate students. Over fifteen thousand undergrads, that includes pharmacy, twenty four, twenty six graduate students. And there's your breakdown overall in-state versus out-of-state, about fifty fifty. Fifty eight point eight percent of our students identify as female. And so overall, the university, a robust year for enrollment through all sources. Next slide, please. I always like to share how URI is a microcosm of the greater world we live in and certainly the value of our diverse community that we value. You know, our strategic plan calls for creating an inclusive community, and it means having a student body that's representative of the world we live in. So you can see that this is a growth since two thousand nine of our students. Just for an example, look at our Hispanic Latino growth from about eight hundred and twenty seven to over twenty one thirty three. Once again, another record there. You know, our growth, and you can see our Black and African-American student. And so this is just a way to show you alone and in combination. So when students have two or more races or ethnicities that they're represented here, just how we've grown and changed as a community over the years. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides are going to actually go into data in greater detail, thanks to some of the questions that I know Chair Cook and others asked last year. So this is overall enrollment at the University of Rhode Island over time. Blue is undergrad, white is graduate, our gold is our non-deGREE students. But I'd like to peel this back in a different way, if I may, through the next slide. This is what this looks like for just two thousand twenty five by college. So AS is Arts and Sciences with forty four ninety nine students. Business has moved into the second place with twenty eight forty five. Again, blue is undergrad here, white is graduate. And then you can see HS is the College of Health Sciences, Sells is Environment and Life Sciences, EGR Engineering. Non-colleges actually are declared students and others, nursing, education, PH is pharmacy, and then it goes down to the graduate school. But last year, you had asked over time, what does this look like by college growth? And so if I could have the next slide, please. So these are some new slides we've not shared before that just gives you an example of the past five years by college, how growth has been changing over time. And the IR website has it in more detail. So how you read this slide is over to the left, you'll see Arts and Sciences, and then five year of data here, right? Two thousand twenty one is blue, two thousand twenty two is the white, two thousand twenty three gold, gray is twenty four, and then that burgundy is twenty five. And so this will just to begin to show you college enrollment over time. And college enrollment varies. We know certainly economic indicators and other factors and student interests can change. But you know, you'll see certainly that business, that third group, you can see them at an all-time five-year high. And then you saw that in the last number by moving into the second place. So this is just a way to begin to show you enrollment over time. When you look at nursing all the way to the right, I just want to clarify something. Years ago, our nursing college stepped in to help meet a workforce need, which was having that RN to BS online degree to help people with an RN degree, but without a bachelor's, get their degree. We popped in in that environment for a couple of years to help meet the workforce need. And so nursing had a nice growth, but I did want to let you know that some of that growth and Provost Wolf certainly knows this, was to meet a workforce need at that time with people with associates. Next slide, please. And then here it is for the other, next slide. Maybe we had a duplication. You know what I'll do is I will make sure that we send it over. It looks like we duplicated the same slide, but I can fix that for the group and send that out. My apologies on that. Top ten program enrollments. So on the left side, you have undergrads by headcount. Psychology, number one, and then you go down to nursing, kinesiology, finance. What's interesting about our fifth one is if you remember just a short time ago, that that college came forward with a new major to meet the needs of our workforce. And so the fact that you have five hundred and twenty five in criminology and criminal justice is tremendous. On the right side are our non-PhD grad programs. Okay, and you'll see Pharm D. And then when you see a program like Library and Information Studies with an asterisk, that means it is an online program. So you'll notice three of them are Masters of Arts in TESOL, Masters of Public Admin, and Library and Information Studies are on the list, are online programs. Next slide, please. Years ago, we talked about the enrollment clip that was happening in Rhode Island, in New England, and beyond. And if you remember, we knew that we were going to be tipped in earlier than others. And so this gives you an understanding of our undergraduate degree-seeking enrollment in-state versus out-of-state. What are the factors here that are in play of how this changed? One, we knew we had to grow. Two, the number of high school graduates in Rhode Island has gone on the decline. And then three, as you know, when I was talking to David before, some of the changes that we've had in in-state enrollment based on some of those programs. Next slide, please. So we have talked about needing to double our enrollment and the master's level, and we know we have a lot of work to do. So this slide shows you on the bottom is our online. The blue up top is our face-to-face master's programs. And we need to do a better job here, and we know that we're working very hard. We've hired a new executive director of the URI Online. We have brought in some great, some of our deans are really excited about this. And so I look forward to showing growth in that white line because that is something that we are committed to doing and is part of our strategic plan. Next slide, please. So just a little note about this slide. As we are, October fifteenth happens, we are quickly updating as many pieces of data as possible. And sometimes when you update data, you're finalizing the final notes as you're trying to get slides in. There is one change here on this slide, the master's face-to-face. The original version was down two point seven percent. It's actually down one percent year over year. Master's online grew slightly, and then you can see PhD, professional doctorate certificates face-to-face, and our growth in certificates online. So just wanted to let you know the one change in number that you saw from what was handed to you previously was just the master's face-to-face online. But I'd like to show a little bit into online, if I may, by the next slide, please. So if you look at our online enrollment over time, the gray bars we just added because we realized something. The gray bars were when Provost Wolf was over nursing and we launched the RN to BS online program. Again, it helped the workforce needs of folks with an associate's degree and an RN. So that gray bar program launched to meet the workforce needs, and then we have sunsetted that program. We're looking at bringing it back a different way. The white bars, for instance, a six eighty one you see this year is taking into account the fact that it's really new growth in online. But I wanted to show you that the strong bars from years ago really represented just one program that met some workforce needs. So that seems confusing, but I wanted to kind of share with you. There were some things happening within the numbers based on some of the programs that we jumped in to meet workforce needs and then changed. Next slide, please. Just online by degrees growth, you can see again to the left, you see bachelors, what's going on there? Again, we met the workforce needs. And then to the right, you can see the growth in master's enrollment. But we have a lot of work to do there, and we know that our growth in masters all the way to the right, top right, and then if you look at their certificate growth, we're really working hard, working with our colleagues to expand the growth in these areas. And I look forward to growth to come in that. And I believe, Emily, that should be my last slide for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions now or later. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate, I know that was a lot of data to go through, but thank you for allowing me to share lots of pieces about the university, where we are and where we're headed.
Dean, thanks very, very much. Any questions for Dean? Just a couple of comments, Dean. One, it looks like the upside over the next few years anyway in grad is going to be on the online side. Would you agree with that?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. And do you feel that all of the low-hanging fruit in that area has been pretty much picked? Or can we expect, you know, somewhat comparable percentage increases that like we've seen in the last couple of years?
I do not think we have taken care of all the low-hanging fruit, and I would like to see us grow at a solid ten-plus percent there. Heather Sharp Smith, who's joined our community, is doing a terrific job with our colleges. We're also looking at how we market and what we're doing and looking at doing some changes there. So we've done a big shift in our approach towards online in the past. It's actually been less than a year with Heather joining us, and I'm hoping that we still actually have some things, you know, to clean up as well. And so it's not just reaching for it, but there are some things we can do better. And I'm really excited about the work our academic colleges and our faculty are doing in this space.
Great. Okay, thank you. Other questions for Dean or for Barbara? Okay, thank you both. The next item on our agenda is the report of the Chief Research Officer, so I'll turn it over to Bethany. Oh, by the way, I, let me just note for time management purposes, we've got about forty-five minutes left in the allocated time for the committee. We are scheduling an executive session that should take somewhere between fifteen and twenty minutes, I would guess. But I want to leave the last fifteen minutes for the three action items if we need it. Okay?
Thanks, Neil.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. Go ahead. All right.
Yeah. Barb, thanks for a great report and teeing up all the, all the impact of our research and those really highlighted publications. It's so exciting to see the scholarship and the research come together. So really, again, want to put a pin in how proud of our faculty we are. And, you know, we, we talked about the, the need for resilience, and my report is going to be very short to you today because we had a Board of Trustees meeting on September twenty sixth on a Friday, and by October first, the government was shut down. So that really, really slows down research in terms of new awards to the university. So there's not much to report about anything coming into the door. It's a challenging time for our faculty. They can't reach out to program officers, ask questions. The grant portals have remained open, so we've seen a continued submission of proposals to federal agencies for deadlines, but right now they're just, they're just in the system with, with no action. But just when you think you're ahead, even in the shutdown, the, the Department of Energy decided to cut one of our awards. So we had a two and a half million dollar award that resulted in about one point eight million in cut funding from the Department of Energy for a project related to offshore wind. I'm sure you've seen the news that those awards are getting cut. So that's really the only significant cut I have to report. Otherwise, it's been very, very slow on that federal front. We've been working, like Barb mentioned, in coordination with the leadership team for federal actions here. But also, I've been spending a lot of time with my counterparts regionally and nationally to understand the impacts of this shutdown and just for awareness in terms of how other universities are responding. So that is my very, very brief report, but I'm very happy to see our faculty are continuing to submit grants.
Thanks, Bethany. You know, I wish I could be optimistic about the duration of this closure. But based on the news I'm following today, there doesn't seem to be anything imminent. So let's just hope that once, once it's finally opened, the spigot opens quick, okay? We'll see.
I agree. I agree.
Any questions for, for Bethany, despite the brevity of her report? Okay, if not, our, the next item is for our committee to convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A seven for discussion of research support from partner organizations and enrollment and recruitment is referenced in the posted agenda. Do I have a second or a first to motion to go into executive session?
Monica Garson moved.
Thank, thank you, Monica. Is there a second?
Charlie Fogarty, second.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any extensions? Okay, then the motion carries. The committee will now convene into executive session for the reasons specified. It's anticipated our executive session will last approximately thirty minutes, perhaps a bit less than that, after which the committee will reconvene in open session and consider the pending action items. Live stream is going to be paused during the executive session and will resume once the executive session has ended and the committee reconvenes an open session. For all those participating via WebEx, please confirm by saying yes that no other person is present and or able to hear the discussion at the remote location.
Yes.
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 If you do not automatically move into the breakout session, join the session when prompted on your computer screen by clicking on the join now button. Attendees now not participating in the executive session will be moved to a waiting room. Emily, are we in executive?
No.
I don't think we are. Not yet.
It looks like maybe breakout rooms were created, but we weren't assigned to them. I don't know if you can hear me, Lynn and Emily.
Okay, it's coming up.
Yeah.
Hello, Kristen.
Okay Neil, we're live. Oh Neil, I think you're still muted.
Yeah, I was the one that muted after I told everybody else to stop. Committee's now convened at open session. The first order of business is to seal the executive session minutes. May I have a motion that the minutes of the committee of the October 27th executive session be sealed?
David Mutterman also moved.
Thank you David, is it? Thank you, David and Joe, any discussion in the motion? I'll ask for a voice vote, all in favor please say yes, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? If not, the motion is approved unanimously, will now move to three action items. Two have to do with the awarding of degrees, one group posthumous awards and the second are usual awarding of degrees for those completing in fall. Barbara, would you talk about the posthumous degrees, please?
Sure, we are respectfully requesting the awarding of two posthumous academic degrees at the upcoming December commencement in recommendation to the URI Board of Trustees. The first is Kathleen Gemma, a Masters of Professional Studies and Certificates in Healthcare Management in Training and Development. We also are asking for Riley Eldridge, a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the committee recommend the board approve the awarding of posthumous academic degrees at the Spring Commencement 2026 to Kathleen Gemma, the Graduate School, and Riley M. Eldridge, Feinstein College of Education.
Barb, just to interrupt, I apologize, but Barb, you said it would be at the December commencement, this vote says spring, should that vote be corrected, that motion?
I'm sorry. I'm going to have to look, I think it was for fall, but I will have to confirm.
All right, how should we proceed, Alyssa?
I think you could just revise the motion to say December or spring.
All right, may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve the awarding of the posthumous academic degree at the Fall or Spring 2026 Commencement to Kathleen Gemma, Graduate School, and Riley M. Eldridge, the Feinstein College of Education.
Monica got it so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Joe Mathews second.
Thank you, Joe, ask for a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Yes. Those say opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? If not, the motion is approved unanimously and the second is our routine or traditional motion with regard to the awarding of degrees that the committee, so I need a motion, that the committee recommend that the board approve the awarding of undergraduate and graduate degrees, diplomas, certificates, and honors to be conferred by the President to the candidates who have completed their requirements at the conclusion of the Fall 2025 term and who are approved by the faculty of the University of Rhode Island as recommended and presented in our enclosure.
Monica got it so moved.
Second, Monica, a second?
Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, being no discussion, I'll ask for a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Are there any abstentions? The motion is approved. Finally, we have our motion to approve honorary degrees and I ask maybe Barbara Mark to remind us of the process before we consider that motion.
Great, so we give out honorary degrees at the May commencement ceremony and earlier this month, the Honorary Degree Committee met and reviewed all nominations for honorary degrees, providing recommendations to the President. And this is an open process where nominations are taken in a portal and then they are reviewed by a committee that also includes faculty and number of students across the university. And as a reminder, the name of the degree recipients are kept confidential until the university makes an announcement about their selection closer to commencement. So the committee received the President's recommendations for honorary degree recipients separately, you all, and we are requesting that this committee here recommend their approval to the URI Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Barbara, we did receive a memorandum outlining the candidates, so may I have a motion that the committee recommend that the board approve the awarding of honorary degrees to the recipients proposed by the Office of the President and the Nominating Committee.
David Mutterman also moved.
Thank you David. Thank you, Joe, is there any discussion in the motion? There being no discussion, may I have a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? If not, the motion is approved unanimously. The next agenda item is item seven, the motion to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Monica darn so moved.
I got a little worried there, all right, thank you Monica.
I was hoping Mutterman a second.
A second, thank you David. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously and we are now adjourned, thank you all.